Showing up before 30. What I thought we would do is work through these presentations that the manager's going to make, and after that, we would break briefly for dinner and then come back and finish what the rest of our agenda, probably move the city's concerns, any council concerns, to the end of the agenda so we can make sure we get through everything, if you will. If we don't get to that, then you can, you know, provide comments to the manager after the meeting. For the benefit of the staff, Mr. Manager, I know we got a lot of members of the public who are here. If we get overcrowded, maybe some of your staff members could give up your seats to a couple of members of the public if they show up. And I know the clerk is made available. The council chamber's upstairs has a video screen in it. If any member of the public would want to join us up there and watch the video, David does, and I'm certain this presentation will be replayed on our cable channel routinely. Is that right as well?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. All right, so it's up to you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. As you will recall, when we discussed Waterside at their retreat, the council retreat, back in September, one of the issues that we put out on the table is to make sure that we can appreciate the entire waterfront, all the way from Harbor Park to the Wisconsin. What this allows us to do is take advantage of a great asset that the city has. And we'll tell you that in our agenda today, we also, we have, besides just the Waterside proposal, we also have an update on the community services board, but also there's an update on the mid-year, the financial condition of the city. And I think what's important, how I tie these two together, Waterside and the financial condition of the city, one, you will see that there are some positive signs that we have in the mid-year, as well as the next five years, but there are also some not-so-positive signs. So I bring that to your attention because what's very important to us moving forward is how we are able to grow the city. So in other words, just simply taxing or cutting to address the situation is just not enough. So Waterside provides us with this tremendous opportunity to look at a way that we can grow the city. What I will say is that we don't want to do this at the expense of other jewels within the city. In other words, we don't want to have a proposal that relates to Waterside that, you know, may take away from Granby Street, or may take away from 21st Street, or Colley, or even the mall. So with that said, basically today, Stanley's going to give you a very brief overlook, overview of the five proposals that we have at this point. I will say that we are in the initial stages of reviewing these proposals. We will bring in outside assistance to help us. It's also important to have input into this decision-making process. But I will say that we are looking at these proposals through the input that we've previously had from the general public. I will say that I think what you'll see is some individuals who are out here that are basically saying that they'd like to put their money in Norfolk. They think that there are some opportunities here, and we believe it's very encouraging. But the bottom line is that we're not going to present anything to the council, the community that's not in the best interest of the citizens. So with that said as a backdrop, basically what I'll do is I'll turn it over to Stanley, and he'll go through each one of the five proposals that we have at this time.
Our intent is, as the manager says, to give you an overview of the five proposals. Waterside Associates Limited Partnership issued a request for proposals, and we did receive five by the deadline that was created. God bless you. For the proposals, and this is an overview today of those, there still needs to be analysis to be done. There is no action required of the council today. One that has already reached some public overview has been the one that was delivered by Harvey Lindsey Development Corporation with additional partners. The major theme of their development, as was expressed in the newspaper article that covered it, is a new conference center in place of the Waterside, and then an overhead walkway that would connect that new conference center where Waterside is now, above Martin's Lane, connected to the existing conference center that is attached to the Marriott Hotel, and then beyond that, over to essentially where the Selden Arcade sits today. They would also propose that the Selden Arcade be replaced with some parking and a mid-rise hotel, and then where a former hotel site had been identified before, that could be an opportunity for another smaller mid-rise hotel on the Plume Street side, and an office building on the Main Street side. And that's generally an overview of the type of development they'd have. They also suggested in their proposal an expansion of the Waterside Marina, and including in that expansion would be putting out on the water a signature seafood restaurant. That is the artist rendition that was submitted to us and that you saw in the newspaper. You don't get to see the signature restaurant, which would be about right here, but that's where they are, that's what they're proposing for a conference center with about 35,000 square feet of uninterrupted ballroom space on one floor, and then additional ballroom space on other floors.
Is that, okay, please, is that the Bank of Hampton Roads Tower?
No, that's the Sheraton. That's just a part of their building as this concept. It's not a separate building.
That's Dominion Towers.
This is Dominion Towers.
Okay.
And then the Sheraton, and then this is where Waterside now sits, and that's where they would build a conference center.
So Stanley, you'd have to raise Waterside.
Yes.
And the park stays, correct? Town Point Park?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Just so, in size, so we can all understand it, the Marriott Conference Center has a ballroom that is how big?
I believe it's 22,000 square feet.
And this would go up to 35,000 on one floor?
Yes. Uninterrupted space. No columns within that space. The next proposal that we wanted to cover with you was submitted with John Aragona, was the submitter for Mark VII Studios, according to the RFP, and they wanted to do a program featuring the Norfolk Sound Beach Music as a theme. And what they would be doing is taking essentially the same facility that we have now and re theming it so that there was, and they gave examples of the types of improved restaurants that would be, and venues that would be inside the Waterside, but it'd be three restaurants. They, as an example, they put in there an Italian, a seafood, and a prime steak. There'd be a food court, there'd be a live stage area for live entertainment, tiki bars, some retail stores, a beach music cocktail lounge, some fine dining supper clubs on the second floor, and they also included a shag dance club, a theater, and some broadcast studios as part of their program, and a comedy club. They did not submit a sketch, so I don't have one to provide to you in terms of a rendition of what the Waterside might look like. The next developer that submitted was Dracar America Proposal. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. They would propose tearing down the Waterside, acquiring and removing the Sheraton Hotel, and building a 22,000-seat arena there for entertainment and multiple use. They have pro-formas where they suggest whether, under one scenario, they might try to entice an NBA franchise here, and then they have another pro forma without an NBA franchise. And as you read through their development, their initial plan would be to develop this and after maybe 15 years, to sell that development and invite local investors.
Where are they at?
They are international. I don't recall off the top of my head which, what state.
Do we know anything else they've done?
They have not done anything local. They have, on a number of occasions, made proposals to put sports arenas around the country, and often.
You're not telling us any of the city contributions in any of these that I'm sure everybody wants city money? In any of these, we're not finding that out? Is there a reason behind that?
Well, I think that the biggest issue, Council approach here, is that we have to get, what's in the proposal may not be ultimately what we believe they're trying to get at. So in other words, we need to make sure that when we see a figure, it's a figure, whether it's, you know, public money or private money. So right now, we're at a stage where instead of throwing some numbers out, they were not 100% sure where they're coming from with it, that we'd like to just stay at this level to let you see the, any drawings we have, any photos we have, but just give you the basics of each one of the proposals.
Marcus, the RFP said that we wanted whoever develops it to make a significant, if not total, financial commitment, or in other words, you know, I don't, you know, it's what I've seen of some suggesting the city make a rather substantial commitment. I was thinking we were trying to turn this over to private sector.
Well, I think that's a tough issue here today. Everything's negotiable, so at some point, we're trying to be very careful with figures as it relates to any of the proposals, because we would not, we don't want to harm a negotiating stance with any of the proposals. So to answer your question, you know, directly, right now, we do have some numbers, but we question some of the numbers that are in the proposals, and we would...
The RFP, we kind of left it open-ended.
Sure, right, because that gives us the opportunity to negotiate.
And this was a sketch that this proposer had thrown in. It's not site-specific, but it's a rendition of the type of facility that they would be inclined to place along the waterfront.
And the sports arena would be in the bottom left, if we're looking, that's the location?
This entire thing is the sports arena.
That's the sports arena in there?
Yes. That's their, their concept of what it might look like.
Stanley, was there any sort of pro forma? I mean, these things run into hundreds of millions.
There was a pro forma in there, but we have yet to delve into it as to the details The next group, they titled their proposal Project Neptune III. The developer that submitted is the Alvin James Development Group, and they too would create a theme-based, dance- and entertainment-based development in the existing Waterside as we have it today.
They should have picked Poseidon, it would have gone a lot further.
Poseidon, okay. I'll take the hit on that.
Should have picked Poseidon.
The Poseidon. They proposed to develop adjoining the existing facility, 150 hotel room development that would be green. They would turn the facility into three large nightclubs, one of those nightclubs having private membership club to it. They would have a couple of restaurants, a sushi and oyster bar, and create an outdoor deck. They would also like to include an IMAX and a 4D theater complex within the facility as well. And they did not provide us with any sketches in their proposal, so I have none to provide to you today. The last group, the Cordish Proposal, was from the Cordish Company. They are a real estate development company. They do a lot of developments around the country, term the power plant, I think that was covered in the newspaper here recently. Their proposal is to, again, create an entertainment, restaurant-themed experience with a lot of live entertainment opportunity to it. On the first floor, their concept includes approximately seven restaurants, a small food court area, and then a large stage area where live entertainment. They would also open the sides of the, of the facility so that it really is more transparent in terms of view corridors from one side of the building to the other. On the upstairs, on the second floor, they would have a layout of approximately six restaurants, and many of the restaurants that we, and facilities that have come in there are facilities, name brands that are associated with Cordish power plant developments around the country. This is an example, an illustration that they gave us of what they think the Waterside might look like. As you can see, they would add a couple of exterior signs that we don't currently have now, and again, this is trying to depict that transparency that I mentioned to you. That's why, that's why I mentioned it.
Are they, they're going to keep the existing building? Is that what...
They would keep the existing building and invest money in it, and bring in new restaurants and food court facilities. They also, as you can see, have contemplated the idea that that, and I think they still have Hooters down here, that they would, maybe the existing restaurants would be incorporated in that, since they still have some time on their, on their leases. So what's next?
Can we go back?
Yes, sir.
Does the Cordish proposal include approving the Marina?
That was my question. Do any of them...
Well, the Harvey Lindsey Development Group had expanded the Marina, which I presume has an improvement to the, I do not recall, I mean, that's a very good question, I'll have to look. I don't recall off the top of my head that it specifically called that Alors Marina.
Stanley, the, in the Lindsey proposal, does that include, and I don't know how extensive it is, fueling, providing fuel for boats?
I do not recall reading in it a specific call-out that they would be fueling there and everything, but I don't think they, this proposal got to that much of a detail. So I don't, that's why I say it that way, so I don't want to mislead in it is or isn't. I think that's all to be, to be developed as we work through this.
But even absent of that, we did receive an independent proposal from just talking about just the Marina, in terms of expanding it down to Sheraton and doing some other things, but this was, had nothing to do with any of these proposals, and so gas and everything.
I don't know whether Marcus wanted to cover this, but our next idea would be that we would engage some consultants to help us with the specialty evaluations of some of the proposals in terms of the viability of conference center space, hotel rooms, office buildings, that sort of thing, just to make sure that the numbers and our negotiating positions have some strength to them as we go forward. And then certainly, as we're doing today, making sure the processes are in public and everything, we will, as at appropriate times, be coming back and letting you all know, letting the public know, and giving you all the opportunity to help, to hold public sessions so they give you their input.
The, we already had a group of people come in and tell us, looking through all the comments, they already kind of put together the proposal, and I was reading through it last night, and many of these projects don't meet what they were recommending. And I'm just wondering if this, we get more consultants come in, or this goes out to the public and the feedback comes back that none of these work, I mean, are we stuck with these? What if nobody, what if we don't like these five? What's the, are we on a rush to...
We're not required to take in one of these fives, that doing something other than these fives remains an option?
Yeah. I mean, what's your timeline, Marcus?
Sure. My timeline is to make sure that we give you the best information that we can. I mean, literally, you could look at each one of these proposals, and you could have a different level of expertise that comes to the table, and that does not mean that all of the expertise has to be paid consultants. In other words, some of the issues we have to deal with is the hotel industry, the convention industry, things of that nature. So we say at the first quarter of the calendar year, I think that's more than feasible. Again, our goal today is to make sure that everybody had a feeling of what we have, the vibe that we have. That doesn't mean that some pieces of one, you know, are more attractive than, you know, some pieces of another. So basically, we want to get to a point when these questions come out, we're able to respond to them and not say, well, we'll get back to you, we'll get back to you, we'll get back to you. So the first quarter.
And I would like to officially thank all the people who did do the proposals and everything. We appreciate their interest in Norfolk as a viable place to build and invest their money.
Can we get, can we go back to the first presentation? Maybe the council got some additional questions. I don't know, it seems to me, Marcus, that we ought to provide some sort of summary for the public of what was proposed. I mean, the community is very interested in this site, something that had some scope of what, of what the financing might entail, of what's being proposed, rather than, and I understand it's preliminary, and some of them are starting points, but I think the public's entitled to that sort of information. And a summary sketch, I think the council is as well. I don't, you know, I don't, I mean, this needs to be as transparent as possible without interfering with our ability to strike a good business deal for the community.
Sure, I agree with you, Mayor. What you will get is you'll get a hodgepodge of data. Again, we'll give you everything that we can give you, but it won't be a good apples to apples. There's some proposals that are a lot of words, there's some proposals that are a lot of numbers.
Well, again, some sort of process where you summarize what's being proposed. We don't have to look at some hard pro forma, I mean, but you can get to the bottom line in these things. The people who, it seems to me every one of the proposals should have had some notion of what it was, what they were going to invest, if they were going to be taken seriously, as well as what, if anything, was to be expected of the city. So I know we've seen, at least in the paper, that some of that information is available. So that ought to be available to, you know, it's on a summary form that we can put on our, we can put on our own website, as well as, you know, any information we can get up on our internet, if we can be hopeful. Can we, can we go back to the first one, and then, maybe if everybody feels like we've had enough, that's okay with me too. The Lindsey proposal is, you're calling it a conference center. Really, there are three levels in that, if you want to put the screen up, I think, from what I understand. There are three levels, and one is really sort of uninterrupted exhibit space, and then there's a lot of breakout rooms up above on the second floor, and then on top of that is the larger banquet room. Isn't that right? And there are overhead walkways or second-floor walkways that would go over all the way to Plume Street, right?
Yes, sir. Ross Martin Blake.
Okay. The convention center, within the terms of the proposal, who is, who is paying for the convention center? Who's being asked to?
Well, again, Mayor, as I mentioned earlier, those are some questions that, again, they're words on a piece of paper, but we need to get into more negotiations to see what they're saying.
And I think their proposal does include an improvement in the Marina as well.
Do we have market data to show whether or not we can support a convention center of that size, including with Virginia Beach's convention center competing with them, and looking at all of Hampton Roads, because it's my feeling that large conventions are kind of out the window now, they're, you're not seeing them as much as used to, and would Norfolk draw large conventions?
That's the research that we're going to get forward.
That would be part of that.
Tom, I can tell you, while you sit there, I'm looking over there, and the industry is sitting in this room, and they're shaking, they're not, they're shaking their head no as to what your premise is. I'm not saying that I agree or disagree with this particular point, but, you know, when I look at the industry sitting over there to my left, and they're shaking their head you're wrong on the size of the conventions, I don't know anything about them either, but I looked over there, and I could see three heads going this way that you're incorrect, at least with the premise.
Generally, convention business is up about 5% this next year.
So, and with the, with the turn in the market...
In our size market, at our size market.
And with the turn in the market, who knows where that could be. Trouble is, is I think what we have to look at is, is that a good, is that a good business model, per se? Not necessarily in the sense that our convention's up, down, I think we need to figure it and calculate it, and to our overall debt load and things like that. We need to examine that. So, and I'm not picking any particular proposal, but I did make sure that I looked at the people who know a lot more than I do about conventions and conferences, and they're all in disagreement with that premise. And I think we need to learn more about it before we go with the idea that they're down. Again, I'm not selecting...
Well, the point of my question was, are we going to get, we need to know more.
I agree.
I don't think by any means this is a scope, Virginia Beach or Hampton, this is, I don't think this is the size, it's more to the niche than we're looking at across the street.
Their proposal was based on the 2004 study that was done for the city.
Right. We're not going to have it in Virginia Beach or Hampton.
Suggesting it's the size that we need.
Who pays for the Ferris wheel?
That was not specified in there.
Maybe it would be a good idea. We've been at this for a long time. I mean, we've been studying this Waterside piece for, I don't know, Stanley, how many years have we been?
Three years.
Three years. Would it be good that maybe for the benefit of all of us whose memories aren't as good as we, maybe we don't have great files, where you could summarize some of what's been done so far? You don't have to do it today, but I know at some point, we talked about some principles, or we should talk about some principles that ought to guide our decisions about what we want at Waterside, if we haven't had that conversation before. I think we have, but maybe, you know, we ought to look at what we've got, maybe then talk again about that, so, about what we think is appropriate, not just, you know, I understand the economic return that you had mentioned early on, but this needs to be enduring, in my opinion, and it needs to be something that will stand the test of time, because this community loves this location, and we have to be very careful about how we treat it. In my opinion, sometimes less is more. I've always been sort of a, I've always warmed to pictures like that, to be honest with you, but I think you have to be, we'll have to see how it works out.
One thing I think that we also need to consider, Marcus, is in any of the proposals, which wasn't discussed today, but I think it's got to, we've got to keep it in the, in our background, is the idea of what will connect Waterside to the main area of downtown. I know that Harvey Lindsey gives the proposal of an elevated walkway, and I don't know if that's the solution. I know that there's, there's certain other solutions that are out there that we've seen from consultants that have come, about making it more pedestrian-friendly, be able to cross Waterside Drive, certain gateways to Waterside Drive from, from the main section of commercial place over where Bank of America is, where the current garage is. So I think that we need to consider in the overall plan, if we're going to put something on that side, again, of significance, that people have to be able to make the connection from the mall easily, and Granby Street easily, to and fro between the two significant commercial hubs of the downtown area. Lastly, you mentioned outside assistance. I take that means consultants. I'm consulted to death in this. I really think we've had enough. Before you came, we had, the former manager, Regina, had gotten some consultants here, brought them in from around the United States. I thought they were going to give us solutions, and it was not what I expected. I think that you have enough brain power within City Hall, you have enough brain power within this room, and within the citizenry, as shows in this room right now, of people who care, than to perhaps bring in a lot of outside consultants and the money that would go to that. I get it, I'm not saying you may not want to bounce it off and get a feedback, but I don't know if we need to bring in another set of consultants in Norfolk who don't know us, don't understand us, and go back through that. I mean, just think that through before we do that again.
I agree with, as a matter of fact, when you said bounce it off, maybe I should have used the better terminology. To me, we have many people, like Tony P. Libio, and the individuals who understand the industry, so when I say that, I mean, using resources so that we have, that we maximize those resources before we go into decisions.
Exactly. That's really more appropriate to bring in somebody.
We also have our major universities as well, the Business Center, OU, Norfolk State, you know, we can utilize those folks. I know we talked about that on some other issue, but we can utilize them as well, and the, I mean, PhD students, master's degree students, those kinds of things would probably work well also.
I agree with, go ahead.
I thought that, to me, I thought it was another way of saying that we would bring folk in and help us negotiate, not necessarily look at the process again. I think this is another level of negotiating that we're going to get into as relates to the nuts and bolts of trying to strike a good deal for the citizens of the city. And so I thought that possibly, if we were going out to get anything, that would be with somebody that deals with these types of negotiations on a daily basis, you know.
The only thing I would say, and I agree with a lot of what you said, Andy, is that I think if the manager thinks he needs another tool to reach, make a good decision, a good recommendation, whatever tools he thinks he needs, I think we ought to give him, give him the freedom to do that.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Part of, no more questions, then we will, okay, it's 5:00, then we will break for the, for dinner.